Welcome to the November 1st, 2018 ZBA meeting. I want to remind everybody that the meeting's being taped. So our first order of business will be to look at the minutes from the last meeting. We'll vote on them. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes? Yes? Make a motion to accept.
Oh.
Okay, a second.
A second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes from last meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? Get your hands. Just want to take a moment to explain the order that we're going to try to follow tonight. The first, we're going to hear from the applicants and their request, and they can add relevant information. Then we'll listen to people from the public who are in favor. Those opposed, follow. The board will discuss anything with any questions. Then I'll offer the opportunity for the applicant to withdraw their request without prejudice. And then lastly, the board will vote on the matter. Anybody wanting to speak will be recognized by the chair. Come to the microphone, state your name and address. All remarks addressed through the chair at the microphone. We were told that there's also going to be an extra microphone. If somebody's here and there needs to be an extra question or two, or something cleared up, there's an additional microphone. And lastly, all comments should be respectful. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We're going to proceed on the bed and breakfast one to start with.
The first thing that we're going to take care of is the bed and breakfast. It is closed. It is a closed meeting. All of--
Public comment.
Yeah, closed to comments. All of the correspondence that we got will be made public record. However, I'm not going to read anything. It's all because it is a closed meeting. So the first thing I'm going to do is ask Mr. Kalashewski to report what town council advised us, and then I will give the applicants the opportunity to withdraw or proceed, and then we'll have a vote. Rich?
The first thing I did was clarify the difference between a bed and breakfast and a boarding house. The bed and breakfast, whether it be an Airbnb or regular bed and breakfast, is just an advertising situation. The difference between a bed and breakfast and a boarding house is the bed and breakfast offers a room with breakfast served. The boarding house offers no food. The second difference between the two is the bed and breakfast must be owner occupied. I'll clarify that because there was questions about number of owners. It is not the number of owners that counts. It's the number of owners that are residents that count. So the other owners can live out of town, and as long as some of the owners are on premises accounts. The boarding house is a different situation where owners do not have to occupy that. So it's a non-owner occupied and becomes commercial status. The next question that was asked, or one of the questions, was how many people can live in the house? That drops back to the health code and building code for room sizes. There can be up to six rooms in a bed and breakfast, or up to six rooms in a boarding house. So I think that pretty much clarifies that, okay? I'll clarify what Frank just said about the board members have received copies of letters from butters. They all can read those. They just cannot discuss those since the meeting is closed. So unless they choose to open the meeting up, no one can ask questions about those letters, and that's it.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, this time I'd like to make a motion to vote. Well, let me back up. There will be five members voting on the bed and breakfast application.
Frank?
Yep? And I--
You need to have discussion before you motion to vote.
Okay, okay.
Between the members.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss, or any questions? I know we discussed it at length already. Any questions that come up after what Rich has found?
I think as part of the-- part of what we're going to vote on is to grant the permit, if we so choose to, with certain conditions. And those should all be part and parcel of the motion, okay? And if some people would prefer to do it with less restrictions, or more restrictions, or what have you, they have the opportunity. And I think Kathy summarized them, making sure that we have all the stuff that we want to pinpoint. And if she-- I'm more than happy for her to make the motion. I just want to make sure that some of the things that we discussed are actually incorporated in the motion so that there will be complete clarity going forward, and there won't be any misunderstanding as to what's voted and what's not voted, okay?
Want to read those, Kathy, one more time?
Sure. The conditions. The bed and breakfast must be owner occupied. More specifically, guests are only allowed when Fred or Roswita are present. The bed and breakfast will be closed when Fred and Roswita Berwick are out of town. The B&amp;B can offer up to two rooms total for guests. The B&amp;B will not function as an event venue for guests of the B&amp;B. The board of health inspector or the building inspector will conduct an annual review of the B&amp;B to ensure codes and conditions are followed. Any written complaints will be forwarded to the ZBA. The permit will expire when Fred and Roswita are no longer living at 194 Lower Road. The permit will expire in two years, and the permit is not transferable.
Thanks, Kathy. So no questions? We're all-- Okay. So at this time, I want to ask, you want to withdraw your application or proceed to the vote?
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion with the items related by the clerk. She just read into the record that we grant the permit subject to those conditions, and that in two years I have to file another application back before the board, either for a modification or a continuance.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All members in favor of granting the application?
I'm not in favor.
You're in favor? You're not in favor? You're in favor? You're in favor? No, I'm not in favor. So we have--
Three, four.
Three?
Two.
Two. So at this time, we'll have to decline the application.
Application's denied.
Yeah, application's denied, yeah.
So we have to fill out that form and make sure that it gets to the town clerk, and I think it also gets reported in registry deeds? Am I right or wrong? No? I don't know. Whatever gets done-- Town clerk. Goes to the town clerk.
So what I'm going to do is-- So since I haven't put one of these out before, so everybody signs them?
Yep.
And then puts where they put--
Yes or no?
Do you have a pen?
Yes. I think Kalashewski's not a member.
I have to say, that's not enough.
We've got to put something up in here with conditions?
Right, I have a draft copy.
Okay, so you're going to attach it?
Yes.
All right, just see attached, okay?
But, yeah, what we voted on.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got to make sure it gets attached.
Point of order.
Three in favor and two opposed.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm going to go to the back of the row and not participate in the zoning-- The next item on the agenda for the zoning board of appeals is I am a member of the Deerfield Industrial Development Board.
Okay.
And I believe I'm in the possibility of a conflict of interest.
Okay.
If it becomes a necessity that I participate, I would only do it in that manner, okay?
Okay.
And that would have to be at the request of the petitioner.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Frank, would you like to put a citation?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes?
I understand that a positive vote requires four in favor.
Correct, correct.
And when is every application possible?
Two years.
Two years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I'd like to open up the meeting. Deerfield Industrial LLC of Five Industrial Drive West, South Deerfield. The applicant requests a special permit to utilize the east end of the parking lot at Five Industrial Drive West as a contractor's yard. Approximately 50,000 square feet of otherwiseed unused parking area to be used as leased area for trailer storage. So would anybody like to come forward and make a presentation?
So I guess I would first request, if the board has received our letter from our attorney, which should have been this morning?
We have, yes.
Okay.
It arrived this morning. We do have it. We all have a copy of it.
Okay, and all members have read that?
Pardon me for one second.
Yeah.
Can you say your last name one more time?
Plotkin, P-L-O-T-K-I-N.
Okay.
Okay, all members have read that letter?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So I just have some couple visual aids of just the area that we're talking about. Can I have Roach?
Yes, you may.
This is just simply Google. So this is the--
Everybody has to speak up.
This is the east end of the parking lot over here. So we're just talking about this area here. This is a current overview of the building. This is much more recent. So these are actually, this is three trailers pictured here, so they're parking along here up to about the light post here on either end.
Okay.
So that's the area in concern.
Right here?
Yep, exactly. And that they would be over here as well.
Okay.
They can come up here right now?
Yep. And I'd like to offer anybody wishing to come up and take a look at these photos.
I know I'm getting old, but all I'm hearing is mumble.
Yes, okay.
And all I hear is this guy.
Okay.
Okay.
I can't even see his face. So is there some way you could speak it to the mic so everyone here can hear clearly?
We'll do our best.
Yes, we'll try harder.
Yeah, thank you. You good with it? Okay. Anybody else want to look at the aerial photograph of the layout? No? Okay. Anything else to add, Matt?
No, I mean, we just, we simply don't use the area.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just trying to generate some extra income from that particular portion of the lot.
Okay, so any of trailers belonging to your company?
We have one trailer--
One trailer.
--that is registered to us, correct?
Okay, and who else?
The trailers that are stored there.
Yep.
Yankee Candle, who is another occupant of the park.
Okay.
Do we ask more questions later?
I was just checking to see if we ask our questions now, or if we wait till--
Yes.
Yes.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, it's only, the only use for it will be trailers parked there?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any hazardous materials that will be stored?
Nope, the trailers are empty.
Okay.
How many?
Our current lease is up to 25. There's potential to store maybe 35 there at the most. That's just what the actual space would allow for.
So you're asking for permission to store up to 35?
No, up to 25.
Up to 25?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I understand what I read? What I read was that this is going to be a place to store trailers, is that correct?
Thank you, Dex.
Correct.
Okay, who's going to control whose trailers go in there?
Well, as we determine who we're offering a lease to, right now it's Yankee Candle. That could change in the future.
So it could become a trailer terminal, then, is what you're saying?
No.
Is that correct?
No. It's just for, it's just parking essentially for trailers.
How is this going to be controlled? Are we going to control it?
Who?
Well, somebody has to control it. Somebody might dump a trailer off there. We don't know what it's in it. We're stuck with it afterwards.
Oh.
And this has happened in the past in other places.
Okay, that could happen anywhere, though.
Well, isn't this a business with storage trailers there? Isn't that the way this is written for your business? Am I correct?
It's, well, part of, Deerfield Industrial LLC owns the land, so it's part of their business to lease the space, yes.
And all the trailers that will be stored there that you'll have leases with will be empty?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to ask anybody who would be opposed to the application to come up to the table. Thanks, Matt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Felicity Hardie. I'm the attorney for the Deerfield Economic Development Industrial Corporation. Previously, I had sent the ZBA a summary of our opposition to this application for a special permit. It is my view that the ZBA actually must deny the permit because the applicant has not applied for the right kind of relief.
The right kind of what?
The right kind of relief.
Okay.
So in the application, asks for the ZBA to provide a special permit to Deerfield Industrial LLC for a contractor yard. That's wrong for several reasons. First of all, Deerfield Industrial or its tenant, Atlantic Furniture, already has a special permit for that, for that location. And that special permit is for warehousing, which is what Atlantic Furniture is actually doing on the site. So at a minimum, it seems to me, if the applicant wanted to do something with the existing special permit, it should have asked to modify the existing special permit rather than asking for a new special permit. But the most important point really here is that what they want to do is not a contractor yard. The zoning bylaw defines what a contractor yard is. Let me just get that out. A contractor yard means premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of subassemblies, and parking of wheeled or portable equipment. The key piece here is that the premises has to be used by a building contractor. Neither Atlantic Furniture nor Deerfield Industrial is a building contractor, and therefore it cannot apply for or receive a legal special permit for a contractor yard. I understand that the applicant may have attempted to modify the application by virtue of a letter from its counsel that the board received yesterday. I got a copy of that letter, but I did not get a copy of the modification. But even if the applicant attempted to modify the permit, the application, that modification is invalid because it's not, it was not subject to public notice under general laws, Chapter 40A. So I, in my judgment, the only action that the ZBA can legally take in this situation is to deny the application for special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
I'm--
Okay, I just wanted to ask if you wanted to--
Counsel, I'm chairman of the Deerfield Economic Development Industrial Corporation, which oversees the operations of the park.
Okay.
So Felicity speaks on our behalf.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, that's fine. If you wanted to add anything, okay.
I'm good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions? Rich?
I want to make a comment to the official statement. The, they really can't modify the permit they have for Atlantic Furniture, because this is not an Atlantic Furniture project. This is a Yankee Candle project. So modify, they are basically subleasing to it for a different scenario. So they may have, or there may be a different definition that needs to be placed on this. And so even if they deny this permit, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, even if they deny this permit, it would be denied based on a contractor's yard, they can simply come back and apply for a warehousing or storage thing for Yankee Candle as a sublease. Correct?
I'm assuming that if the board were to deny this application, we'd have to go back to 40A and see whether or not a second subapplication for special permit would be permitted within the two-year timeframe. But assuming that that was true, at least the application has got to describe correctly the activity in the application that is before the board tonight. Just doesn't do that.
Okay. I don't, I'm just, I'm the zoning enforcement guy right now, so I just, that's why I'm having this input. But they can't proceed without a permit from somewhere. And I don't believe that if this is denied because of a wrong application, I believe they absolutely can reapply within a two-year timeframe. And, but they have to revise their application considerably, okay? We, I don't get to enforce the DEDIC bylaws because they're not zoning bylaws per se. So that, I don't know how you get the DEDIC enforcement done.
Well, what we're doing tonight is appearing as an abutter to the applicant.
Okay.
So it is true that DEDIC has its own set of protective covenants. That's not within the purview of the ZBA. You just are here to enforce the requirements--
Yes.
--of your own zoning bylaw. And that's, what we're doing is simply expressing our views in our position as an abutter to the, to the project.
So I guess I would say in all fairness, the applicant should be offered the ability to withdraw and resubmit his application.
That seems, that seems correct to me.
That seems to be the precedent.
I think that, I think if the board has the, is, has the practice of offering the applicant the opportunity to withdraw, as I saw in the, in the prior application, it seems to me that this, this application is, is, should be in the same posture.
I think my recommendation would be to ask the applicant if he would, I'd have no vote, okay? But my recommendation is the zoning enforcement at this time would be to ask the applicant to withdraw and have the ZBA members get a legal opinion from town council on how that application should be worded for future.
That's up to you and the board.
That's up to the board. So that's all I got to say.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding this? Matt, after hearing what you heard, would you like to withdraw and, without prejudice, and resubmit?
Well, I guess my question would be, would you be willing to seek town council advice?
We can.
Okay.
We can.
And we have side votes drawn.
We will.
We will, yeah.
But you have side votes drawn.
Yeah, yes, you will.
Withdraw.
Okay. Noted then that Matt, representing Deerfield LLC, chooses to withdraw the application at this time and wait for town council's recommendation on how the, the permit should proceed.
Got a vote on that, Frank.
Yep. Motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we vote to proceed by asking town council.
Okay, and I second it. All those in favor? Okay. Done.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
So we don't need to fill out that form anymore?
No. Okay, and lastly, in accordance with Deerfield zoning bylaw, Chapter 179, Article 3, solar electric installations, environmental resources management, on behalf of Mass, RE 12 LLC has prepared this request for two zoning variances. Site use variance and a setback variance. The proposed project involves construction of a 20-acre portion of the existing Deerfield Railroad property at 100 Railroad Yard map, map 7, Lot 5. The proposed use for this site is to install solar panels that will generate approximately 2.7 megawatts of direct current electricity. Solar generation greater than 2 megawatts requires a site use variance in commercial zones. The solar panels will be installed to the south of the existing rail yard on property owned by Pan Am Southern LLC. The zoning bylaw for commercial zones requires a setback distance of 100 feet from all property boundaries. The project is requesting to change setback to a 50-foot front and a 25-foot side and rear setback. Sir?
Thank you very much. Really appreciate-- Can everyone hear me in the back? I know--
Yes.
Yes, you can. Is it turned on? Can you hear me?
You tap on it? That one is working.
We will switch mics.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and appreciate you listening to our presentation. My name's John Drabinski. I'm a geologist with ERM, and we represent the client here and my colleague.
Kyle Purdy. I'm a biologist also with ERM. Thank you again for meeting with us tonight. As you alluded to, we are requesting two variances. Site use variance, since, since this is a commercial two zone, this is a, over, we're proposing a 2.7-megawatt solar, solar arrays, and anything over 2 megawatts requires that variance for the use. And then also, as we stated here in the public notice, we're requesting a variance from the setback distances. So from 100 feet, we're requesting a 50-foot front, and then 25-foot sides and rear. So the front of the property is kind of that bottom left side, and that's River-- So the front of the property is kind of that bottom left side, and that's River Road. So we're requesting a 50-foot setback distance from the road to the first panels. The vegetation that's currently present between there is forested. We're going to maintain that. We're not going to touch it. And then for the sides and rear, we're requesting a 25-foot setback. The rear is actually, in this figure here, you can see in red, when we got our certified abutters list, we have, the parcel is actually split into two, and the middle section that is the railway is actually leased by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to Pan Am. So even though Pan Am owns the area in red, they lease the middle portion. So we, this is actually an abutter of ours back to the rail. So that's why we're asking for the variance for setback relief to in the rear. Because if you would look at the aerial on the backside of here, I'll speak about it.
There's a mic right there.
Yeah. The rear of the property here is actually where the railcars are and everything. So this is that first red kind of finger of it, and then you have the rear one. But this middle section here is a different property owner, and that's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We're asking 25 feet to there. Yep, and in addition, it was a former ground shield site that has since been capped. We feel as though with the current gravel laydown area and an old loading dock, that this is a good site use for the property. You know, it's a clean energy that's giving back. But yeah, I know everybody's got a lot of questions on this, so be happy to answer.
You go first, I think.
I'd just like to hear more comment from the public.
Okay.
Yes, if you want to come up to the mic and state your name and address.
Oh, I'd probably hear me.
Yeah. Believe that one is working.
Oh, it's a simple question.
Okay.
I'm kind of, you mentioned 100 feet, and now you're talking about going to 50 feet, and then something about 25 feet on the opposite side. So why was it 100 feet to begin with?
Because that's the regulation.
But would that do with whatever went into that position? Whatever were to take that space, would you still have the same regulations?
No, thank you.
It's for solar only.
Seriously?
Yes. 100-foot setback is for solar.
And is that because they worry about, I mean, I know I meant to ask these guys this before, because we're right there. We're 823, and you know, we have small kids in the area, and I don't know how, I don't know how healthy that is. I know they say solar's amazing, and it's helping all the environment, and I truly believe in helping the environment, but I don't want to live in any more toxic spot than I have to, especially with the kids. Well, for me, too. But that's my main concern, what happens to our health with all of this. So close, because you're talking, I mean, I could throw a stone and pretty much hit it from, I'm the closest one to it.
Yes, actually, there's no risk at all. Mass D O E R has a full publication on discussing the hazards of, or lack of hazard with solar installations. And I think, as everyone knows, the former Lake Asphalt Plant is right there, which has been cleaned up and covered. We can address that as we go forward. So the impact on the environment from the solar array and operation of solar array is basically minimal. There's no sound, there's no glare, there's no noise.
There's no radiation.
No radiation. It's very, very benign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions?
Just requesting for some clarity as to looking at the map.
Okay, did you come up to the mic and state your name and your address?
I'm Dana Levine. I live at 754 River Road.
So I'm just going to switch this around.
That's okay.
Okay, in terms of, you said, what was the front? What was the back? What was the right and left?
The front, the front is, we're requesting 50 feet.
So this is the front?
Yes.
Okay, that's River Road.
Yep.
And you're requesting going from 100 feet to 50 feet?
Correct.
Okay, so when you do that, does that mean you're taking out more trees?
There will be some tree clearing in that, because that, the site is forested.
Right.
Portions of it are. There are portions that are gravel road, and there's old concrete dock. But yes, there are some areas that need to be cleared to install the panels, but that area from that red line in towards River Road will be maintained. So all those existing trees, those trees that are probably 40 to 50 feet in height will not be touched.
Okay.
So we wanted to maintain that vegetative buffer between our project and you.
All right, so the question is, going from 100 to 50 feet, does that require you to take more trees getting that variance?
More of.
I think the reason for the request is to allow more panels to be constructed so that the project is viable. The trees will remain, but if it went in further, there may not be additional trees cut because some of that is open space.
So by putting in more panels, you're going to get more shading. You're not going to get as much sunlight, because if you're going to leave the trees there, or you're not cutting more trees, you're getting closer to your buffer, right? Where the remaining trees or bushes are. Like, for instance, here and this section here, because there's wetlands in here, are you at all asking that this part change? Because this is the south side.
Right. We've been to the Conservation Commission and got an order of conditions to address that. We will not be working within the buffer zone, or the --
Not in this section.
No, no.
We're just talking this section. So in terms of, trying to think of where all the trees are. So the trees are right in this section here, and then there's the platform.
Yeah.
That is, I believe it's right here.
Mm-hmm.
So there's not a whole lot of stuff in front of the platform, only maybe half of it. And then from like this point down, it's pretty wooded. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, is it going to, the amount of trees that you're removing, is it going to make it a lot more visible to the road?
Not necessarily, because we will have some screening along the road to protect the view shed. And if you remember, when you go down River Road, the topography drops down.
Exactly.
So when you're standing on River Road, and you look straight across, you may not, you may not even see the panels, because the panels are only like eight feet tall.
Okay.
So, for example, if it was developed commercially, you may have a 35-foot building there, so that you would see. These panels you won't see.
So it's on the side, it's going from 100 to 50.
Yep.
And on the end, we're talking from 100 to 25? And then this side, too, 100 to 25?
Well, that's still the same property, so it would actually be, if you go down to the southern array, it'd be 25 feet from there. Yep.
So 25 feet here?
Yep.
So that's where the bushes is.
Bruises. Yep, we spoke to him about that, and he's maintaining his paved access road to the back half of his property.
That sliver is a road right there, Dan.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. That's the road that goes out back, so that will be maintained.
Yep. Yeah, he had comments during the Conservation Commission review process of our notice of intent, so we've been in talks with him about that, and what he ultimately wants and wants to see.
All right. I think one of the major things, especially where we are, is the effect it will have on the value of our homes, having this in there. So I'm very concerned, especially, you know, with some of us who have bettered our homes over the course of the years that we have spent there, that this is going to affect us if we decide to sell our homes. So I don't know how to evaluate that until it happens, and then realize people don't want to be a part of it, because now they're dealing with the railroad, now they got solar panels, they have the sportsman's club. I mean, it's just, it's one more thing that you add to the mix when it comes to property value. So what are we doing to kind of rectify maybe any disparities there might be in the value of our home when it comes to the installation of these? I mean, how do we know until the market, until it shows in the market?
I think the best thing you can do is protective use case. I think the parcel zone commercial, so when you look at your zoning bylaw, there are certain uses that are allowed in a commercial zone. So I think as a community, you have to decide, is this a, someone comes in with a heavy commercial use, which is allowed by the zoning bylaw, you know, which is a better benefit for you as residents? And I think as residents, in my opinion, and obviously, I think I have a biased opinion, and I don't blame you for that, but I would think that the solar use is more benign than having a 35-foot building there that may have some commercial activity. But that's a decision, I think that's a decision, you know, that the town has to make, and that's a decision that as residents of communities, these are decisions we make to go forward. The use is benign. The use would be of very limited impact on municipal services. The town would gain some tax revenue. In 20 years' time, the lease would be up, and perhaps it would regress to something else. So it's not there forever. It's a, I believe, a 20-year lease with the railroad. That's something to think about also.
All right. I guess I think all of our concern is that we're driving down River Road, you know, if you've got realtors running the River Road, they're going to be demonstrating or describing to potential investors about what the topography looks like, and what they're viewing, and if that at all is going to affect any kind of real estate. So I think if we can be super sure that, even, because I know that we can see down to that deck where the railroad deck was, if we don't see it, I'd be happy not to see it.
And then, there's one more hearing with the planning board, and the planning board's going to go through this in great detail. And perhaps that's where, you know, we could work with the community, say, what type of screening did you want along? Maybe it's ARVADID, maybe it's something a little bit more robust. But you're absolutely correct, where the old co-op is, that's all been cut down, and you can see right into the rail yard. Perhaps that's something we can mitigate very easily with appropriate plantings.
All right.
I have a question for you. Where is your property?
I am off the map here. I'm just on the other side of this. So from what I understand, is this section here is all wetland, so it's
That will stay.
It's pretty much, do we know how many feet that is to my property?
Are you the first property? You have a little solar, you have a little solar panel in your yard right there?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's probably, I'm going to guess, at least 200 feet, usually.
Yeah, so we took the wetland boundary. We actually, with the Conservation Commission, they wanted a 30-party consultant to come in and review our notice of intent, and they reviewed our impacts for that wetland area. We don't have any wetland impacts to the 100-foot buffer, that tiny little corner there?
This one?
Other one? The south corner?
South.
Yep. There's a small, I think it's less than 2,000 square feet, to the 100-foot buffer zone of that wetland.
Okay.
So if you were to go, you can kind of see the existing topography, there's kind of that ridge.
Right. Yep.
So that kind of puts it into perspective. But with this project, we wanted to make it viable, we wanted to make it worthwhile, but also we took resources into consideration first with the design, took the wetlands, and then designed off of that. So we took the 100-foot buffer zone and built off of that.
I would say from your house, you probably aren't going to see the panels, and that goes pretty thick woods.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the other thing is, is there's going to be a fence around it?
Yes.
Okay, is there going to be any room? Does the deer move that way and have created a path, and you can tell, pointing it back there?
Dana, could I interrupt you for a second? This hasn't gone to the planning board?
Okay.
And you're asking all the planning board questions?
Okay.
Well, no, no, we can talk back. And I want to say that the fire department hasn't approved this, and the planning board hasn't approved this. I've reviewed all these plans, and I've found that I will be asking the planning board a couple of questions on that design that you're looking at there right now.
Okay.
Okay? And I'll just point out one to you.
Okay.
There is no access to the rear of this property where they're asking for the 25-foot setback from the rails. There's no way to get a fire truck or vehicles back there. Okay? And I'm, the fire, I've recommended to the fire department that they look into this.
Okay.
Is it both sections, Dick, or just the southern section?
And a few other, there's a few other issues. So my recommendation to this board is, they don't have enough information to make a decision tonight, and I'd like to see this board continue this hearing until they receive a report from the planning board addressing all your questions, and I know you'll be at the planning board meeting.
I will be there. And, you know, part of the, part of learning and trying to move forward on something like this, and just so that it's informative to us, we don't always know exactly the right questions to ask.
Well, you're asking good questions, but the questions, this board, that isn't quite the venue to ask those questions. If the planning board doesn't address some of these questions, then when this board goes to do the setback variance, then that would be the time, if the planning board misses anything, to ask those questions, because most of your questions would get answered.
Okay.
Do we have an idea as to when the planning board will have made their decisions at their meeting?
Well, if I would, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but my suggestion to you would be to continue this meeting until you get a report from the planning board of some kind.
So the planning board, excuse me, I didn't mean to draw, the planning board is meeting next Thursday evening, and based on our discussions with the planning board, they were hoping that the ZBA would grant the variances. The planning board was somewhat reluctant proceeding without the variance in place, because they assumed that, why would they opine on something when they're not sure the variance would be addressed? We're willing to go at risk to, you know, assume that questions get answered, you folks would give us a favorable outcome. I'd hate to be in a catch-22 with the planning board.
If you're in a catch-22, and here's your risk. The risk is, if you fail at this meeting, because they don't have enough information.
I don't want to fail. No, 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 I'm not saying that.
Okay. If they vote on this tonight, and they, for some reason, vote negative, you're completely done. So if you haven't gone to the planning board, and they don't have enough information to make their decision on, I would ask Frank to talk to the rest of the members and see if they have enough information.
No, I think that's fair enough. I think we want you to make an informed decision. We never say, don't make an informed decision.
That was going to be recommendation. It was good to hear some background information.
Absolutely.
And
And other than those specific questions, would ZBA have any other, other than site access, and some of the other?
Well, historically, the planning board has always ruled first. That's historically, okay? This is kind of an unusual situation. If I was sitting there, I'd be asking a little few different questions. I'd ask the height of the panel, for example, and then I know the elevation of the road. So then I would know exactly how much panel stuck up against, was above the blacktop level. I'd be asking things like the reflections of the headlights on the panels going northbound, if there would be any reflections, or are these black panels that don't provide any reflections? These are some of the planning board questions, these are some of the planning board questions that I would be asking.
Right, and being an ex-planning board member, when we've done planning board hearings in the community I come from, we would give an affirmative decision on a project with conditions that the ZBA or the Conservation Commission would rule appropriately. So I would hope that the planning board doesn't use lack of decision from the ZBA not to proceed. Well, we'll see next Thursday.
I think if you're on a planning board at someplace else, historically, you must know that generally, if one board passes something, the other board generally passes it, unless they've got a lot of conditions that are way out of whack.
Exactly.
Yeah. So that's all I got to say.
From a, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
From your folks' perspective, are there any other questions that we can answer tonight for you, other than what you brought up specifically to the ZBA?
No.
We don't. But there is somebody who would like to just ask a question.
Hi, Steve Assing, resident of River Road. I'm at 795. So with the, with the variance being closer to the road, there's also a fence involved?
Yes.
All right, how high is that fence going to be?
I believe it'll be eight feet.
Eight feet? So it's so, that'll be 50 feet closer than the original on, you're calling this the front side?
Mm-hmm.
So you're going to move that out 50 feet closer to the road. Is the fence line going to be in the woods, in the trees, undisturbed, or is it going to be behind?
The fence line would be most likely that red line you see on the map there, I don't have in front of me. So the fence line won't be on the street. The fence line will be back in the woods. So you won't see the fence. So if you look down, going down River Road, going to the So if you look down, going down River Road, going to the southeast, you should, I'm gonna get back to your question, see the exact same scene you're seeing now, with some additional landscaping to cover that gap where the old co-op facility was.
And is the fence gonna be of a non-glaring, non-light reflecting type, like a black fence?
We could make the fence black. Typically, the Concom likes the fence to be six to 12 inches off the ground, so the critters can go under.
Okay.
So that's all things we could discuss. Sometimes people like barbed wire on top of the fence, some people don't like barbed wire, so it all, again, depends on what the planning board wants. Some communities consider fences structures, some don't, so it depends, I know you don't know, do you feel consider a fence a structure?
Okay, well, I guess at this, I'm sorry, did you wanna-
I actually have a question.
Could you maybe state your name again?
I'm Marcia, I'm sorry.
And your first and last name and your address?
Marcia Hayes, 823 River Road. I was just talking to Dana, and she mentioned something about there being a transformer on the property because of, where is that gonna go? Not at 823, right?
No, they're not transformers, but you're generating DC current from the sun, and you have to transform it to AC current. So there's units out there that'll transfer the electricity.
Now, where are those?
They are shown on the map. You'll see the little rectangular figure, rectangular-
I don't, that means nothing. Show me where they are. Are they near my house or your house? Oh, on the other side.
They're basically very quiet, you don't hear them.
Yeah, right. That's why I was trying.
Okay, so that one's next to your house. Oh, and that's right, yeah, so there is one right next to us.
So next Thursday's the planning board work, people with all these questions could continue to get these answered?
A lot of these are planning board questions.
Great.
We understand.
So, last question.
Yeah, so the question is, I mean, with, you guys are looking to get the variance, right? So you're gonna make this footprint print bigger, and in sense, putting all this equipment closer to the outskirts of that area. So I guess that's the concern, is that she's worried about the transformer, inverter, whichever piece of equipment it is, being closer to her house on one of the borders, but these are the transformers up here?
I'd say, they're inverters, they convert from DC to AC. Yeah. Because a transformer usually steps up, it steps down electricity, just really inverts.
Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to make a motion, Bob?
Lynn, Lynn wants to speak.
I thought you were raising your hand for him, and I saw you point over there. I apologize, the one you raised your hand, you pointed to-
He was over there. I was just trying to go over.
Oh, okay. Could you come up to the mic, then? I apologize, I thought you were saying that he was going to speak for you.
I'm a little short, sorry. Hi, Lynn Rose, I live on McCullen Farm Road, within like a mile and a half of the railroad yard. And I'm here kind of in two capacities. I did some research before I came, although I still needed to get more information. Couple things about who I am, so you understand where I'm coming from. I was on the planning board for seven years when we wrote the solar bylaws, so I have that hat, and some thoughts about that, but more importantly, I've been overseeing the railroad, the cleanup, we know these things very well, at the railroad, there's a number, over 10 hazardous waste sites at the railroad. This particular site is a brownfield site, and I have some concerns, and I'd like to give you some background, so there's a context. I think there's some other regulations that need to be addressed, not only to the planning board, but through the Mass Contingency Plan, which is the state superfunds regulation, so just to have a context, no, of course it wouldn't work if I, sorry, I was just trying to be organized when I get up here. So one of the things to know is that when we cleaned up, when we got them to clean out Lake Asphalt, there was a section of the site that's now being proposed, right, for some of the panels, is that correct?
Yep. Keep going, Lynn, we'll answer questions. We know each other very well.
Yes. So there's a portion of the site that is still contaminated, but under the Mass Contingency Plan, you can do a solution that, in this particular case, that would be monitored in perpetuity, because they would do both, they put a cover of clean, there's contaminated soil with asbestos, and so there's clean fill on top of that, and then a vegetative cover. So in addition, they were required, and if you want, I can give you, I can submit my notes, if that would be helpful, it's a lot of information, if you're trying to keep track of it all. So the vegetative cover is then supposed to have what we call an activity use limitation, which is a deed restriction, which restricts, like any deed restriction, what you can do with that particular property. And that's what enables them to leave the contamination and do a soil cover. Otherwise, they might have to put like a, well, they still might need an AUL, but like a more, like an asphalt cover, something like that, but right now, it's just soil and plants. There's another piece of this, is because it is a hazardous waste site, under the Mass Contingency Plan, as a neighborhood, we apply to be a public information plan site, which means that we get to review the reports and proposals and things from the railroad regarding those sites. We have not had the opportunity to do that, the only reason I know about this was I got calls from a number of people in the community to come to bring information. So I would like to make some, I would like to, there's a number of things that we need to find out, like whether or not the state requires them to revise, they have to submit remedial action options, and they bring that before the community, and the community gets to weigh in and comment. And in order to do that, not only do we educate ourselves as a community, but the town has a consultant we've been working with for like 10, 15 years, to oversee these sites. So we would like to have our town consultant, who works on the hazardous waste site, very familiar with the site, look at these plans, I'd like to know from the State Department, the DEP hazardous waste site cleanup, whether or not other documents are gonna be required to be submitted under the MCP, because they're changing the proposed use. And, you know, typically with the brownfields, you know, there's reports and monitoring, and I read the most recent one. Something to know, too, about this site, it should have been closed out years ago, they have about five years to close out and do all of what they were supposed to do, they didn't. The last report said that they were gonna close out winter 2018, which, can I interpret, was last year, they should have had the activity use limitation. There is not an activity use limitation. I wanna know if they plan to put one on it, if so, is it gonna change from the original intent? I would like to know whether or not the vegetative cover's gonna stay, or we're gonna look at something like asphalt that maybe could handle the weight of the solar panels, things like that. So I would like to check with the state, I would like them to submit the report to the public information plan group, so that we could submit it to the town's consultant. So those are, those are pieces like, so my question, so my question to them would be, like, have they submitted a revised, any of the revised phase plans, you know, remedial action plans, or is this, you know, how is this being addressed? So with the state. So that's one question.
Will you be attending the planning meeting, planning board meeting next Thursday?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. But it's also, it's to understand, this is a complicated site, it's a brownfield site, and I think my other hat, my other hat here is that when we put this bylaw into place as a planning board, we thought a lot about whether or not we wanted these really large industrial-sized installations. And I understand it's a railroad yard, the problem is, it's adjacent to a residential area, it's right across from a residential area, so my comments to ZVA is to take that into consideration, that we really did think a lot about the size, and these possibly being in proximity to residential areas, so-
This is all great, great information, but we need to wait for the planning board meeting to occur first.
Okay.
And then we can address all of the concerns and-
Okay, and I guess-
Well, from there.
Could you explain to us what the process would be after the planning board, would it come back to this board?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Would we have an opportunity to-
Speak, yes.
Okay.
Yes, you will.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Frank, Lynn, the only subject before this board is whether to allow the setbacks or not, okay? So what they need is, they need a recommendation from the planning board, whether to allow the setbacks. Everything you said is fine about the environment and all that stuff, but it isn't for this board. It's just the setbacks, and so that's why I'm recommending to them to bounce this back to the planning board, to do exactly the things you're talking about.
I agree. I think the only thing that was important, the point that I just wanna pull out, is there may be some other regulations that everybody needs to take into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just answer that quickly? We'll be fully, we are fully compliant with the Mass Contingency Plan. I'm the LSP of Record, and I've been working out there for 15 years. We have one additional thing to close out the site, and then we will be closing it out. This is no different than putting a solar facility on a landfill, most of landfills in Massachusetts are capped, so I just wanna be clear, environmental concerns are, will be fully addressed, and we're fully compliant with the MCP.
Okay. Yes?
What are the conditions when they come back, assuming they do come back? What the noise level is assumed, would they propose it for the buffers, and what it would be if we do not approve the buffers?
If the planning board will probably address it, yeah.
But I think we have to grant the buffer, we have to grant the variance, or whatever, and that's one of the conditions that I would be looking for, is how much more noise will there, maybe, maybe there won't be any, but that's what people are gonna be looking for, is that, that's a question I think people are gonna want.
Right. Once we know what the planning board has to say, maybe it'll, it'll answer some of these questions, and we, you know, we can move on. So at this time, I'd like to make the motion that we delay voting on this until the planning board meets.
Continue the hearing.
And we're gonna continue the hearing after the planning board meeting.
Yep, I have to pick a date, Frank.
What's that?
You have to pick a date, that you're gonna continue it.
Okay. So the planning board meets next Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday? Thanks.
And sir, to answer your question, D O E R has done a number of studies on noise, and we'll submit that to the town, it's a very good study by the state of Massachusetts. It's a good question.
Why don't we do the 22nd?
Yeah, are we, can we do any Thursday?
22nd is Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, okay, the 15th? The 15th? 15th acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Bobby mentioned a waiver.
Yes, we need to give, we need to give the waiver.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay, so at this time, I make the motion to continue the move, the-
Hearing.
The hearing until the 15th. A second. Okay, all in favor? Okay? Close? Okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate discussion, and appreciate your efforts, thank you.
We've got a couple other items here.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Not yet, we have to review some correspondence here. I guess we already accepted the minutes. So the last thing is to just receive all of these letters that we received this week from a Butters to the ZVA, proposed ZVA variance.
Do we all have a stack of those letters? I think we all do. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and is there any other business? No? I make a motion to we close our meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the meeting is closed.